Good evening, Santa Monica, and welcome to the, to tonight's council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May tenth. If members of the audience would turn their phones off or to vibrate so as not to disrupt the meeting. There's one person. Okay, if the city clerk could call the close, oh, you know what? We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Negrete, would you mind? Okay, can the clerk please call the closed session items? Can the clerk please call the closed session items?
Actually, let me call the roll first, okay? Actually, let me call the roll first, okay?
Oh, yes, that too. Oh, yes, that too. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Negrete. Councilmember Negrete.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember De La Torre. Councilmember De La Torre. And Mayor Pro Tim McCollum. And Mayor Pro Tim McCollum.
Here. Here. Okay, so real quick, guys. Okay, so real quick, guys. Okay. 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 Denise, did you? Denise, did you? Oh, there we go. Oh, there we go.
I can turn everybody off. I can turn everybody off. I can turn everybody on or turn everybody off. I can turn everybody on or turn everybody off. Okay, so let me call the, the closed session items. Okay, so let me call the, the closed session items. And we have no, we have no request to speak on closed session. And we have no, we have no request to speak on closed session. Our first item is conference with labor negotiator. Our first item is conference with labor negotiator. And it's the agent, agency designated representative is the city manager Dave White, And it's the agent, agency designated representative is the city manager Dave White, David White, and chief people officer Lori Gentles. David White, and chief people officer Lori Gentles. Bargaining unions, ATA, the Administrative Team Association, IBT, Bargaining unions, ATA, the Administrative Team Association, IBT, California Teamsters, Local 9/11. California Teamsters, Local 9/11. FEMA, Santa Monica Firefighter Executive Management Association. FEMA, Santa Monica Firefighter Executive Management Association. FIRE, Santa Monica Firefighters, Local 1109, IAFF. FIRE, Santa Monica Firefighters, Local 1109, IAFF. The Municipal Employees Association. The Municipal Employees Association. AFSMI, Local 4819. AFSMI, Local 4819. Management Team Association. Management Team Association. Public Attorneys Legal Support Staff Union. Public Attorneys Legal Support Staff Union. The Public Attorneys Union. The Public Attorneys Union. The POA, Santa Monica Police Officers Association. The POA, Santa Monica Police Officers Association. SMART TD, the International Association of Sheet Metal Air Rail and Transportation Division, SMART TD, the International Association of Sheet Metal Air Rail and Transportation Division, Local 1785. Local 1785. Supervisory Team Association, and the Coalition of Santa Monica City Employees. Supervisory Team Association, and the Coalition of Santa Monica City Employees. And then the second item is the public employee appointment, and the title is the city attorney. And then the second item is the public employee appointment, and the title is the city attorney.
And we didn't have any callers? And we didn't have any callers?
No, no request to speak. No, no request to speak.
Okay, before we adjourn for, oh, councilmember De La Torre? Okay, before we adjourn for, oh, councilmember De La Torre? Oh. Oh. And before we adjourn for closed session, And before we adjourn for closed session, can the interim city attorney give us her best estimate of when we'll return? can the interim city attorney give us her best estimate of when we'll return?
Oops, six forty-five. Oops, six forty-five.
Okay, we will adjourn for closed session. Okay, we will adjourn for closed session. See you at about six forty-five. See you at about six forty-five.
In addition, under section...
Have been continued at the request of the applicant and/or the appellant. And I would like to propose agenda management to hear, oh, you know what? I think it's going to be the first item after the consent calendar anyway now. Is that right, Denise?
The council needs to vote on that to do the agenda management. Yes.
I move a second.
Okay, there was a motion, motion and a second that we would hear item 8A after the consent calendar out of respect for the mayor's time so that she can return to her. We miss you, Sue.
I miss you too.
All right, so.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
And it needs to be a roll call, right? Okay, can the clerk please call the roll?
And you guys can go ahead and vote as well. Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete. Councilmember Davis. Mayor Hamerich.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so let me, are we going to do the, we're going to do the special items first? Okay, so the first is a proclamation, May 2022, as Asian America and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month, and we have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, Councilmember De La Torre, if you can start us off.
Yes, so we have a proclamation to recognize Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and so I have a series of whereases. Whereas members of the Asian American and Pacific Islander community represent over thirty ethnically distinct groups originating from the Asian and Pacific regions, and whereas people from Asia and the Pacific Islands have shaped the history of California even before statehood in 1850, from gold mining and railroad building to agriculture, urban development, and beyond, in particular, Chinese migrants built the rail line to Santa Monica that made the city an economically viable town at its very inception. Whereas despite these contributions, the United States passed the Chinese Exclusion Act in 1882, which remains the only law implemented in the United States government targeted to prevent immigration by an entire ethnic group or national origin group to the United States. This was followed by the Immigration Act of 1924, which sought to prevent immigration by Asians and set caps on immigrants from East Asia. And whereas hate and fear facilitated the internment and relocation of Japanese Americans during World War II, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have repeatedly been scapegoated for social and economic ills, endured legal and de facto segregation, and have been excluded from land ownership, voting, and other aspects of citizenship. And whereas since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, there continues to be exponential growth in violence and hate against the AAPI community, largely because of very public and racist rhetoric rooted in harmful stereotypes. In 2021, hate incidents toward AAPI communities increased by fifteen percent nationally. And whereas to end AAPI hate requires dismantling all racism and race-based hate, the AAPI community continues to stand with Black, Indigenous, and other people of color communities who have suffered social, economic, and physical harm from generations of systemic racism. And whereas the city's AAPI employees share all two common stories of bullying, disrespect, and explicit and implicit bias, thereby developing the affinity group, the Coalition of Asian and Pacific Employees of Santa Monica, Cape SM, and whereas the city's political and administrative leaders have a civic duty to continue to speak out against the violence and bias perpetuated against members of the AAPI community and to celebrate the contributions of the AAPI community, furthermore, the city applauds the passage of the COVID-19 Hate Crimes Act. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Santa Monica, on behalf of the members of the city council, do hereby declare Asian, do their, sorry, declare and proclaim May 2022 as Asian American Pacific Islander Month in the city of Santa Monica.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Torre. I'd like to now call forward Erica Kai-Yugan, our interim city librarian, to share a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and city staff. As the management advisor of the Coalition of Asian and Pacific Employees of Santa Monica, or Cape SM affinity group, thank you for acknowledging the Asian and Pacific Islander community and staff. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is when we pay tribute to generations of AAPI who have enriched America's history and contribute to our country's future success. The AAPI community currently make up about 6.1% of the total U.S. population, 10.4% of the Santa Monica community, and about 8% of city employees. As the interim city librarian and a firm believer in community learning through shared stories and experiences, I must take this opportunity to share Santa Monica's history in relation to the AAPI community. When gold was discovered in California, Chinese migrants escaping civil war and famine arrived in Northern California and worked in mines that were too difficult and abandoned by Anglo miners. When mining magnate John P. Jones drew up plans to develop Santa Monica as a rival port to Los Angeles, he recruited Chinese laborers to build the Long Wharf and the L.A. and Independence Railroad that helped establish Santa Monica when the first lots of the new town were sold in 1875. Japanese immigrants also played a role in Santa Monica by establishing a fishing village past Santa Monica Canyon that prospered and served as a tourist destination until a fire ravaged it in 1916. While many Japanese Americans relocated to San Pedro after the fire, some stayed and became early residents in the Ocean Park and Pico neighborhoods. However, when anti-Japanese hysteria swept through Southern California after Pearl Harbor, many were relocated into internment camps, causing them to lose their homes and businesses in Santa Monica. Many of us, just like other immigrants and minority groups, came here to chase the American dream in the land of opportunity. When my parents immigrated to North America and moved to the United States, their dreams were of starting a family, buying a house, and joining a community. This was years after my dad, the first one in his family to move from the Philippines to Canada, worked to put himself through school, graduated night school, supported his siblings while being abroad, and eventually sent for his brothers to come to North America. Years later, his brother gave him back a photo that he had sent to his family in the Philippines with a note on the back saying, "I will make the difference." My sister and I keep this photo as a reminder. He, like so many immigrants who came here, absolutely made the difference. It was these dreams that enabled my sister and I, both born in the United States, to grow up with the opportunities and experiences that enriched our lives. I am lucky to be a college graduate and doing what I love to do, working with the community, promoting learning and literacy, and like my dad, making a difference in people's lives. But along the journey, and specifically in my youth growing up on the East Coast, I experienced and witnessed firsthand the racism towards the AAPI community, from racist sentiments to hurtful insults, and gestures to microaggressions and outright discrimination. Often, when directed towards me, I was too scared to speak up, for fear it would escalate a situation. So I stayed quiet, and I ignored them. These experiences, as well as the many stories I heard on the media, in the media, and from our friends and family, made me wonder whether my voice even mattered, whether my story mattered. But I realized that for our society to improve, for our children, including my own children, to have a better future, we need to keep sharing our stories. We need to make sure that others understand that we too have struggled, and that we continue to struggle even as we offer our support, hard work, and commitment to our communities and our fellow colleagues. According to the Stop AAPI Hate Organization, hate incidents increased by fifteen percent in 2021, and hate crimes continue to occur. One that stands out was an elderly Filipino woman from New York who ignored a racial slur and was punched 125 times, stomped on seven more times, and then spat on. This woman, turning the other cheek, was one of the reasons the AAPI community is portrayed as a model minority, because we don't complain. We work hard, and we tend to avoid confrontation, choosing to stay silent instead of standing up for ourselves. Some progress has been made with the passage of the COVID-19 Hate Crimes Act and state bills being heard to curb street harassment against women and vulnerable groups, but there is still work to be done. The federal Asian Pacific American Council's theme for this year's AAPI Heritage Month is advancing leaders through collaboration. This theme is relevant to our AAPI city staff who continue to collaborate to serve the community, to form the Cape SM affinity group, and to host community events for AAPI Month. As the newest executive sponsor and a proud member of Cape SM, I have to share how invigorating these past few months have been, working with this group. If we have anyone in the audience who are members of Cape SM, I invite you to stand up now, please. The dedication of these folks, along with quite a few who aren't here right now, but who are probably listening in, are powerful reminders of how strong we are when we work together and how each of our voices matter. Some of the collaborative work we want to highlight are the Take and Make Kits in front of you that are available at the libraries, and Korean music and dance performance at the main library on May 12th. At City Hall on May 26th, we will be hosting a Rhythm and Spice event, a celebration with food trucks, music, and dance. We also collaborated with the Human Services Division's Mental Health Awareness Month event at Virginia Avenue Park on May 27th. Before their movie screening of Inside Out, Cape SM is sponsoring free chair massages before the movie from a local AAPI-owned business who doesn't need a good chair massage. A full list of events is on a blog post on the city's website. I hope that this presentation has made you more aware of the contributions of your AAPI employees, and that you come and visit and take part in our programs this month, and hopefully also that you feel the gratitude that we feel in working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Erica.
Can you come back to the microphone?
Councilmember De La Torre is going to present.
Oh, yeah.
And Mayor Hamerich, just because I can't see you, did you want to say anything before I give any of the other council members an opportunity?
It's pretty, am I that voice from the ceiling that comes down to you?
Yes, you are in fact a voice of God up there. Yeah.
Yes, I think that I will stay as silent as possible, so you all go ahead.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, thank you so much. Next, we will move on to agenda item 2B.
Proclamation, Public Works Week, May 15 through the 21st, and we have no request to speak on this.
Okay, Councilmember Negrete, if you can read the proclamation, please?
This proclamation is, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Santa Monica. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, youth, civic leaders, and businesses in Santa Monica to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the city of, the city council appointed the Santa Monica Disabilities Commission to advance awareness of disabilities, including mental and behavioral health, and its planning, decision-making, and advisory activities. And whereas, the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, Sue Hamerich, Mayor of Santa Monica, and on behalf of the members of the city council, do hereby the great pleasure in proclaiming the week of May 15 through the 21st of 2022 as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Councilmember Negrete. I'd like to call forward Rick Valti, Public Works Director, to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Rick Valti, you're Director of Public Works. This, this year's theme for the National Public Works Week is Ready and Resilient. And on behalf of the 443 men and women of the Public Works Department, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging their dedication and their hard work that they perform on a daily basis. Your Public Works Department is always ready to serve the Santa Monica community, ever resilient as it pushes forward past the pandemic. And I'd like to call my colleagues from Public Works to join me here, because this is not about myself, it's about my colleagues. As is customary during National Public Works Week, our divisions acknowledge a Employee of the Year who embodies the work ethic and commitment that we are all accustomed to. And joining me here today are some of the Employees of the Year. Sergio Ramirez, he is from the Admin Services Team. Stephen Hall from the Engineering and Street Services Team. You've got to raise your hand. And Drew Johnstone from the Office of Sustainability and the Environment. And then also joining us is Sonny Wang, the manager of Water Resources. We are celebrating on next Wednesday, May 18th, at the City Yards from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., and I encourage you, whenever you have a moment of that day, to stop by, say hello to the folks, especially the, you see a lot of our custodians, our groundskeepers out in public, but I'd love for you to come by and say hello to those of us that work behind closed doors, perform magic without the public eye seeing it, like our mechanics. You'll never see them out on the streets, or even the folks from the water cheating plant, so please come by and visit whenever you can. And also, if I may take a few seconds of your time, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Director of Public Works, Chris Dishlin. Chris was in a former life, he was our Facilities Maintenance Manager, he was our Capital Programs Manager, and I'm really looking forward to Chris with his 19 years of experience to be my partner in bringing Public Works to the next level. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 2C.
Item 2C is a proclamation, National Foster Care Month, and we have no request to speak on this.
Okay, Councilmember Brock, if you can read the proclamation, please?
Well, this is National Proclamation Week at City Council. So first, even though this is... I'm going to give a proclamation for National Foster Care Month, I want to opine for a minute that every month needs to be Foster Care Month, and we need to do all we can to help our children have great lives. And the way to do that is to make sure they're loved and cared for. Whereas Los Angeles County has the largest population in the nation of children who have suffered the trauma of abuse and neglect and who require a special kind of person to help them heal with the goal of successful reunification or permanent placement. And whereas the City of Santa Monica is committed to supporting foster children and the patient, loving, and committed adults who provide these children with safety during a time of crisis, make a difference in a child's life. And whereas the City Council appointed the Santa Monica Social Services Commission to preserve and enhance the quality for all Santa Monica residents and to advise City Council and city staff on identifying need for social services. And whereas the Social Service Commission encourages all residents to explore fostering and/or serving as a mentor to a child in foster care. And whereas National Foster Care Month is a time for people across our community to get involved as foster parents, volunteers, mentors, and employers, and to show our appreciation for the dedication of the foster families who care for foster children and youth and the social workers who support them. Now therefore, I, Sue Himmelrich, Mayor of the City of Santa Monica, on behalf of the members of the City Council, do declare, hereby declare, proclaim May 2022 as National Foster Care Month in the City of Santa Monica. Thank you. Is there anyone to receive this?
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. I'd like to call forward Winifred Wescler of the Social Services Commission to say a few words.
Thank you so much to all the members of the council. I'm here because I have been Chair of the Social Services Commission for the last two to three years and have served on the Social Services Commission for six years. That commission sunsets next month, and I will say that the issue of foster care is something that's very meaningful to me personally and to many people in our community. I think it's sometimes overlooked, and I really appreciate the proclamation that you read just now, because it is very meaningful. While there are 35,000 young people in our county who have been removed from their home or have an open case in the foster care system, here in Santa Monica, the numbers are much smaller, but they belie much more serious issues. About 66 children have either been removed from their homes in the last year here in Santa Monica or placed in foster care within the community or from other parts of Los Angeles. And while those numbers might seem small, they belie hundreds, if not thousands, of struggling parents and families who are trying to make it through their everyday lives. While the numbers are small, they do mean a lot, because about 50% of any of the children who have somehow experienced parental separation and foster care end up either incarcerated, homeless, with some sort of substance abuse problem or related issue, as well as unemployment. So when we look at our own community and the issues that we are struggling with here locally, I think foster care is one of those hidden issues that we really can be doing much more to address and prevent. We do have a county, excuse me, a city contract with Santa Monica Family Services, which is a subsidiary of Vista Del Mar, and they do offer some services, but... And that's really important, and I think often is overlooked. I just want to put in a plug right now. I know you're going to all be considering the Human Services Grants Program, RFP, that will be issued this summer and how much money will be devoted to that grants program. $8 million has been steadily what the budget has been for the entire program, including homeless, behavioral health, any kind of other family support, early childhood education, and other services. Really encourage you to consider increasing that budget. I know that you have lots of hard decisions to make, but this isn't just about intervention, it's also about prevention. And certainly in the case of foster care, we can be doing more. But I do appreciate so much your reading that proclamation and everything that you do do to support our city's most vulnerable citizens, and so really appreciate it.
Thank you, Winifred. Thank you. Next up, Item 2D.
2D is the City Manager Report, and we have two speakers. We have John Alley, who is getting time donated from Kim B. Can you come on up? And then we have Devon Ray Harris. Kim, are you here?
Hi, good evening. With all of you in the same room tonight, I'd like to address an important item regarding our parking garages. Prior to 2019, our promenade was netting the city about $30 to $40 million net per year. We'll get back to that level, but for now, we must feel and look first class. And we do that with a good facility and good parking. We're discussing safety, rising crime due to vagrants, doing their business in our garages and our surrounding parks. They arrive here from out of state, live at the beach, many at Palisades Park, many in Reed Park, frankly, all the parks in the city. With a new board and a board president in the next couple of months, DTSM will be leaner, smaller in size, more efficient, because it won't cover such a large geographic area. Tonight, I want to just focus on the garages. Maintenance, repairs, and capital costs that are normal for any real estate investments aren't being made. Assessment-paying property owners and businesses paid for their construction, and so did the city. The city is one of the largest property owners in downtown. But the management agreement's clear regarding the city's obligations to maintain them. Today, half the elevators don't work due to being destroyed by fires. Elevator permits have long expired. Inspections are overdue. They don't all meet fire, life, safety requirements. If you walk by the ADA parking of Garage 5, you'll see a broken-down swing set that a lady tried to commit suicide by hanging herself on the ropes on five weeks ago. Why DTSM would store it there taking up three parking spaces is stupid. The city maintenance workers do an unbelievable good job. We don't need any duplication of efforts with more cleaning ambassadors. The majority of stakeholders don't want the block-by-block ambassadors or any private security. We want the city to sign a new contract with the maintenance workers. It's been six months. And until Chief Batista and his department are fully staffed to provide law enforcement, we want the Sheriff's Department to assist. The Sheriff's Department already provides lots of services to the Police Department through mental health training and training some recruits. We want the city to invest its funds in the garages as well. By not doing so, we're telling the residents and visitors to basically stay home. They're not welcome. We want them cleaner and we want them safer. Property owners do a good job of fighting the right tenants and leasing their spaces. We want the city to reallocate funds for immediate repairs and ADA-required improvements. The ADA has nothing to do with city codes or laws. It's a federal law, civil rights. It's been around since 1992. It's a simple matter of priorities. Santa Monica residents and businesses are one of the highest taxed cities in the state. We're in the top tier of all cities for staff per residence. We're opening up the possibility of a lawsuit against our city and property owners by not following the federal law. So City Manager White, I'd like to ask if you would make this a priority and report back to us in, say, 60 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alley. Our next speaker is Devon Ray Harris? Mr. Harris? Okay. All right, I think that's it. Okay. Kim B. gave her time to Mr. Alley.
Good evening, Mayor up there in council. So a few things. One, I want to give a few updates on a number of events going on throughout the community, and then I do want to comment on our current deployment with our Police Department around the promenade. So first, I think I saw our Fire Chief somewhere, Seakin? There he is. So this Saturday, we will be celebrating Fire Service Day. It will be occurring at Fire Station Number 1 from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So really excited. I think the swearing-in for you, Chief, was our first public event in quite a long time, so really excited to invite the community in public out to that event this Saturday. And then we already heard about a couple of other events, but also this Saturday, RRR will be hosting a free recycling event at the City Yards facility at 2500 Michigan Avenue. And then also occurring this Saturday, it's going to be a very busy Saturday at Ishihara Park, we'll be having Kidical Mass Family Bike Ride. So lots of wonderful activities on the horizon. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our work to address public safety and homelessness. So going back, I guess now a few weeks ago, we announced the work that our police chief had led with his command staff and the union to really focus on redeploying our officers, and you're seeing this really occur in many different cities throughout the country, to really focus on a strong 911 response. And so at Great Pains, they made some really strong decisions to reallocate officers from various ancillary units, whether it was traffic investigations or whatnot, to really focus and be available on the street. And you've already seen the work through our pure task force, and so really building on that model, a week ago, our police chief, working again with his command staff, has put together a new special operational unit that'll be working in the downtown and promenade area. And so I just want to run through some of the highlights of that for you this evening, because I know it's been an area of community discussion and concern. So first of all, we'll be running two sworn and two non-s sworn. Two will be officers and two will be public safety officers that will be on bikes. They will be providing high visibility Monday through Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and they will be on the promenade and riding through the parking structures. We will also be having our public safety officers doing overnight parking structure checks, and this has been in effect since November of 2021, when the holiday season kicked off. Our Police Department will also be locating a Neighborhood Resource Officer to the promenade to provide direct interaction and coordination with business owners, and we anticipate this officer will be focused or starting and being based in DTSM's offices. We also will be having Neighborhood Resource Officers partnering with our Homeless Liaison Program Team, which you will hear a lot about tomorrow evening in our work to address homelessness, to assist with outreach and enforcement on the streets. And then lastly, when possible, officers assigned to our Downtown Services Unit, so that's a unit within the Police Department that focuses on the downtown area, and help team will be doing checks of all of our bus stops and downtown Santa Monica footprint on an overnight basis, and this will be paid for through our Big Blue Bus Funds to help really support improvement in quality life issues that we've been experiencing. So that's a little bit of taste of what our department is doing right now to address some of the community concerns that we've been hearing, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Before we move on to the consent calendar, the clerk will ask if any councilmembers have any travel to report.
You've asked the question. Are there any councilmembers that have anything to report on travel since the last meeting?
Councilmember Brock?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I do, and if you can give me five seconds. Well, I'll just tell you, I was at the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly and Conference this past weekend in Palm Desert. I voted on topics that came up during the General Assembly. There are 191 cities that compose the Southern California Association of Governments, over 125 were present, including all the mayors and councilmembers from all of our neighboring cities. I found that the sessions, one session was on homelessness and trying to find ways to provide housing to those in need. Another one that I found very interesting was on community internet and ways to provide low-cost or free internet to those in need in every community. On a personal basis, I've long felt we should have a utility in Santa Monica that would provide wideband service for the community. So I found it very interesting, and it also becomes a real place to interact with the mayors of West Hollywood, Culver City, with Beverly Hills, with Calabasas, all of our local cities, and have some real substantial conversations with them. So I appreciate the opportunity, and that is my travel for the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. Does anyone else have anything to report? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to the consent calendar.
Okay, so the consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a councilmember for discussion. In accordance with Charter Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a councilmember present dissents. And we have one request to speak, and it's Denise Barton for one minute.
Ms. Barton?
Does anyone else think it's a contradiction for the city, for the council to be teleconferencing for City Council Board and Commission meetings via AB 361 in Item 3G? While in Item 3H in Attachment B titled 12706, you will see under Section 15, all references to the public being able to use teleconferencing for public comment is being removed from the Charter, under the premise that on May 24, 2022, the city manager will have a steady session concerning possible meeting format changes for City Council Board and Commission and Board Commission meetings, including the cost and staff needed. So the real question here is, why would the City Council want to remove those parts before something new is in place? And again, why would they say they are continuing the action in Item 3G, but then remove the action from the Charter in Item 3H? It's also worth noting that despite the mayor's previous...
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Does anyone want to pull an item? Okay, hearing none. Can I request a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion by Negrete, second by Davis. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Mayor Himmelrich? Mayor Protem McCowen?
Yes.
So the next item is, we're going to go to the 8A. And give me just a second. So Item 8A is the...
Thank you.
And...
And thank you all for doing this.
So, item 8A is the appointment of city attorney and authorization to execute the agreement. And let me see if we have any speakers for that. We have Jerry Rubin, and we have Devon Ray Morgan. Was somebody gonna present on this?
Is there a staff report?
Um, I guess it's our job to present as we are hiring this person.
I'll let you go, Mayor Hemmerich.
I guess I will, from above, right? So...
Sorry, I didn't get that memo.
So, as the public is aware, we have been interviewing for the position of city attorney for quite a while, and at long last, we have found a city attorney who we intend to hire. His name is Douglas Sloan. He's been the city attorney in Fresno for nine years. He's been in the Fresno City Attorney's Office for 16 years, and we have met him, some of us, many times, and I think that you will now see us vote to approve a contract that I'm hoping Susan Cola, our interim city attorney, will describe.
Um, I'm...
We don't have anything in a formal presentation.
Yeah, let's have the city manager report out.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got that wrong. My bad.
No, 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 that's okay. So, I'll just give a quick overview. So, the mayor well-described Mr. Sloan, really excited for him to join the city. As the mayor described, it was a very thorough and deliberative process that the council went through to ultimately make the selection, and the agreement that is front of you this evening is an agreement for a five-year term with automatic extensions. The salary is at a rate of $320,136. It has severance of nine months, and then it has ancillary rent assistance for seven months at $3,000 a month, and relocation expenses based on actual expenses up to $20,000. And so, if this is approved by the council this evening, Mr. Sloan would join the city on June 6, 2022, and we're obviously very much looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open the hearing and hear from Mr. Rubin first.
Well, thank you very, very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city manager, city staff, fellow Santa Monicans. Certainly looking forward to the appointment of a new city attorney. I know how important that is for our great city. I want to thank all of the people that filled in, the dedicated attorneys, one that's sitting here right now. Thank you so very, very much. And I know it's been a difficult process, but I think we're on the right track. I've heard a lot of good things about Douglas Sloan from the great city of Fresno. I do want to say, I can't imagine it's not gonna be something where we understand how lucky we are to have him, that he understands how lucky he is to be serving this great city. So, I'm looking forward to meeting him in person, as I'm sure most of you are, and all I could say is onward together. I hope it's unanimously passed, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Your optimism and positivity is always appreciated. Is Mr. Devon Ray Morgan here? I see Mr. Morgan is... Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there...
I move we hire Mr. Sloan.
Second. Yes, Mayor Hemmerich. Hang on one second.
So, I was simply gonna say that I really appreciate all that our city manager said, and I have wanted very much to put together with this council, a leadership team that everybody feels comfortable with and feels as if it's their leadership team, and I like to think that now we're there, we now have a team that I think that everybody owns. So, that first. But I too want to thank Susan Cola, who stepped forward for us when, I'm sorry, Susan, nobody else would, and you were there, and I feel appreciated, I'll never forget it, right? And I am just relieved that we finally have this final piece of the puzzle. So, on that note, I think, Denise, do we do a roll call?
Yeah, I need to clarify my motion, if you don't mind, Mayor.
What motion? I missed that entire...
Yeah, she's gonna do it right now.
I moved to hire Mr. Sloan, but apparently I was not technically correct. So, I'm moving to appoint Douglas Sloan as city attorney commencing on June 6, 2022, and authorizing you, Madam Mayor, to execute an employment agreement with Mr. Sloan for his service as city attorney.
I second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, Councilmember De La Torre?
You're welcome, it was a pleasure.
Yes.
Can you hear me clapping?
Okay, Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Hemmerich?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem McCowen?
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Sloan.
Congratulations.
He's probably watching.
Yes.
We're looking forward to seeing him soon.
Welcome, Mr. Sloan. And on that note, council, I think you can do well without me, but I did not want to miss this moment in our progress. So, thanks a lot, and thanks, Kristen, for covering.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Hemmerich, for your leadership through that process, and feel better soon. Okay. So, with that, we will move on to item 7A.
So, 7A is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending the text of the city zoning ordinance to establish a conditional use permit requirement to allow a lawful, non-conforming restaurant located within the R2 or R3 zoning district that meets minimum requirements to provide meal and alcohol service to the general public, and this is a second reading.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
And was that Davis that second?
Yes.
Motion by Negrete, second by Davis. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem McCowen?
Yes. Okay, item 7B.
Sorry, I missed that one. Item 7B is introduction and first reading of an ordinance extending Santa Monica Municipal Code Chapter 6.40, Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program. Introduction and adoption of an emergency interim zoning ordinance changes to support Santa Monica's economic recovery and adoption of a resolution related to fee waivers and reductions. And we have no speakers on this item.
I see two speakers for 7B.
Is that for 7B?
I see Mr. Rubin and Ms. Barton.
Okay. Let me get there.
You see it?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, we can, oh, we can have the staff report first, sorry.
Great, thank you, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Jennifer Taylor, I'm the Economic Development Manager, and I'm actually here on behalf of the Economic Recovery Task Force. And tonight, we're asking for council to extend the Santa Monica Outdoors Temporary Outdoor Program. So, this was adopted initially under emergency orders. This helped to support all the Santa Monica outdoor business operations that we see citywide, from sidewalk dining, the Main Street alfresco, parklet operations, the promenade satellite dining, extended operations on the San Monica Pier, as well as beach and fitness permits and activations on private property. Tonight's request involves three components of what staff is asking for council. The first is to adopt, sorry here, first is to introduce for first reading an ordinance that would amend our municipal code Chapter 6.40, which is for our Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program, which would extend this term through to September 30, 2022. Currently, the program is due to expire at the end of June. So, this would help support ongoing activations through the summertime and include fee waivers associated with it. The second component tied to the fee waivers is to adopt a resolution that will authorize the extension of fee waivers. These were for pre-existing programs prior to COVID, so our monthly sidewalk dining license fees, as well as a number of other fees, including fitness fees for trainers in our parks and on our beach. And then, the third component is to introduce and adopt an emergency interim zoning ordinance that would basically extend the emergency IZO through till the end of this year, through December 31st. A little bit of background on the Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program. As I mentioned, this was first adopted under emergency order. It was then to continue to facilitate these uses during COVID. You all adopted this as a resolution, and it turned into Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program with associated fee waivers in June of last year. That was then extended to where we are now, to the program that expires on June 30. And as I said, tonight, the recommended action is for us to continue to extend this pilot program through the end of September 30. And the reason behind this is really twofold. First is to continue to provide critical and continued support for our small businesses as part of our COVID business relief measures. This is so that our businesses citywide can help to do outdoor operations at no cost during the busy summer months to help support their ongoing economic recovery efforts. We're on the road to economic recovery, but it's still, it's a slow road for many of our small businesses who are still struggling to pay deferred rents, and so, this would be a much-needed relief effort to help support them. And the second reason behind this is to help to facilitate a smooth transition to longer-term programs. So, we will be coming back to you at the end of June to review options for longer-term programs to support the parklets. Currently, we don't have a policy in place for those, so by extending this program through the end of September, that will help us to transition for businesses that want to continue operations effective October 1st under our longer-term programs. And then, for the third component, which is the interim zoning ordinance extension, this is for outdoor use of private property, we're asking to extend this through December 30, 2022. This will allow our businesses to continue to use private property under this Santa Monica Outdoors Program to support outdoor dining, retail, fitness, and personal services on surface parking lots and other open space areas. It will continue to provide and facilitate support for emergency response and economic recovery efforts, including public safety facilities and emergency shelters in all of our zones, as well as temporarily allowing for drive-through facilities, including supporting COVID testing and vaccination sites. And it will continue to support economic recovery through allowing temporary uses supportive of economic recovery efforts for up to six months, as well as critical for many of our restaurants we hear continuing to allow for off-site restaurant alcohol sales and retail alcohol sales under this IZO. And we're asking for this extension to allow for staff for time to return to you in the fall for a specific program for the outdoor use of private property. So, with that, I conclude. If anyone has any questions, I know we have some public comment, too.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there any questions for staff before we move on to public comment? Seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Davis.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I just have a quick question. I know there's been a survey going around. Is that still open? Okay.
No, the survey closed, I think, a week and a half ago. We're still in the process of tabulating the results. That's primarily tied to the parklets. I think we'll be releasing that as part of a press release in about two weeks' time, and we'll also be including it in our report to you at the end of June.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember De La Torre?
Yeah, no, I was eating at Gilbert's on Pico Boulevard, El Indio, and it's just kind of hard to imagine, like, El Indio not having that option, that outdoor. It's just, I think if we work with businesses, they can turn that into something a little bit nicer than just an older parking lot, a great amenity for that neighborhood, which we were always looking at, how can we increase sort of walkability and more outdoor sort of presence and dining? I think that's one of the, I think probably one of the few good things that COVID has given us is that the outdoor dining option, and so, I'm really looking forward to staff coming back to us with something more permanent so that these businesses can really integrate sort of those outdoor dining experiences as a permanent feature of what they offer our residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman De La Torre. I completely agree.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. So, we can proceed with public comment. I believe Mr. Rubin, you're up first, followed by Ms. Barton.
All right, well, thank you again, and thank you to Ms. Taylor and the good work of the Economic Recovery Task Force. I think this is really important, especially at this point in time, but I do see this as being very supportive of our small businesses and seeing what we can't bring about down the road even after the end of the year. So, I hope you'll continue to support this. I think it makes the city more pedestrian-friendly, and it'll actually do a lot of good to make the city safer in many ways, and I'm sure the businesses have full capability and responsibility to make sure everything is clean and good and safe, and it's just a great way to show that support. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Ms. Barton?
Good evening. Staff's contradictions just continue in the staff report. The main one being, are the areas private outdoor dining areas or parklets? Because aren't they two different things? Or is it outdoor dining within the city and parklets still other entities? My next issue with the private outdoor dining areas is that they intrude onto the sidewalk. To be clear, having additional seating up against the building with more private outdoor dining area completely in the street curbside does not seem to be a problem, allowing enough sidewalk for pedestrians. But when you start putting up metal framing like Hi Ho Cheeseburger that extends out past the tree wells, put that together with putting planters to the edge of the metal framing instead of having enough planters to buffer the traffic street side to protect the patrons, and on top of that, these planters on the sidewalk are used as public urinals at night, with urine rings around the base of the planters and urine trails running from many of them, along with the swarm of flies over the sidewalk next to the planters due to flies hatching on the plants and the planters. Then just think of how the area will smell when it gets warmer. So, as a resident of downtown who has to endure these conditions outside the front door of the building I live in, I would like to request that the private outdoor dining areas not be in front of the front door of residential buildings for all the reasons I previously specified. Otherwise, it looks like you don't care about the residents living downtown. Oh, wait, what am I saying? By your actions of trying to turn it into a crime-ridden slum, you never did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a motion to introduce for first reading an ordinance, reading by title only and waiving further reading thereof to amend Santa Monica Municipal Code Chapter 6.40, Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program by extending... Santa Monica Outdoors Pilot Program by extending the term of the pilot program through September 30th, 2022.
So moved?
Moved by De La Torre. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Negrete. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
I'd like to call for a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the extension of fee waivers, or if applicable, reductions through September 30th, 2022, for monthly outdoor dining license fees, monthly license fees for businesses with permits under Santa Monica Municipal Code, Chapter 6.40, outdoor fitness fees in city parks and the beach, and certain temporary use permits.
Do I hear a motion?
That was the motion.
Oh, sorry.
That was the motion.
He said, "Call for a motion." So, okay, he can also make the motion.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second by Negrete. If the clerk could please call the roll.
So these next couple of motions are going to be, I'll be calling those.
Okay.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilmember Negrete?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce and adopt an emergency interim zoning ordinance, reading by title only and waiving further reading thereof, amending and extending the interim zoning regulations established by Emergency Interim Zoning Ordinance Number 2674 CCS and Extended by Emergency Interim Zoning Ordinance 2678, authorizing temporary use of private outdoor space for commercial activity and extending certain zoning changes necessary for continued emergency response and economic recovery.
Is there a second?
Motion by Negrete?
Second.
Second by Brock. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
And that passes.
That passes. Okay.
Our next item is 13A. It's recommendation to accept Marcy Kaplan's resignation from the Recreation and Parks Commission and authorize the city clerk to publish the vacancy. And we have no request to speak on this item.
I move with regret.
Moved by Councilmember Brock?
Second.
Second by Davis. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes, and we accept Ms. Kaplan's resignation from the Recreation and Parks Commission with regrets and thank her for her service to our community. Item 13B.
Item 13B is request of Councilmembers Negrete, De La Torre, and Brock that the city manager schedule a study session as soon as practicable regarding whether to allow for the sale of non-medical cannabis in the city of Santa Monica. As the city currently allows the sale of medicinal cannabis, the study sessions shall include suggested municipal code changes as well as options for city council direction on potential locations, permitting process, social equity provisions, to make legal cannabis business ownership and employment opportunities more accessible to low-income individuals and communities most impacted by the criminalization of cannabis, and any other regulatory restrictions as may be appropriate. Did you guys want to continue?
No, I think you're good. Thank you, Denise. Mr. Councilmember De La Torre is going to give us a little staff report.
Yes, thank you very much. We wanted to bring this forward because we were looking at how much revenue is being lost to neighboring Los Angeles. And we started talking about, well, what can we do, you know, to provide, you know, more access, you know, for those residents that benefit, you know, from cannabis and from, and also to come up, to bring our policies up to the times. You know, Los Angeles has a recreational policy. Santa Monica still has an archaic policy of having to deliver a doctor's note in order to have access to cannabis. So we wanted to look into changing that. So this is really a study session where we're directing staff today to look into this, to come back with, you know, various options so that this council can give direction if we decide that is the right way to go. We want to be obviously cautious. The city of Santa Monica has been much more conservative than, you know, than any other city, I think, in the region, definitely if you look at what's happening in Los Angeles. So the city's going to look into, you know, looking at where dispensaries might be able to open, how many. There'll be a lot of details in terms of also the criteria of how we select individual organizations and businesses that would be able to offer that as a service to residents and also to our visitors. One thing that I did want to add is that's not in the request is looking also at delivery, as people have called and said, hey, you're looking, there's other options as well for delivery. Sometimes delivery might be a more cost-effective way for people to enter, you know, the business. And we do also have a very strong appetite to ensure that there's an equity provision so that, you know, individuals that have had, you know, problems with the law get second opportunities, you know, to enter the business as well. And maybe delivery might be a cheaper way for them to participate. This is a highly regulated industry at every step, you know, from cultivation to sales. The state of California, obviously, you know, has policies that, and also the county, but that have to be followed. And so, you know, we are assured that anyone coming into Santa Monica will be following all those policies as well. And the other thing that I wanted to add is, that's not in here, is I did, you know, get some calls, talked to residents, and there was concern about, you know, gateway drugs and, you know, alcohol, obviously, is very plentiful in our community, not so much cannabis. So we debated a little bit about that. But one thing that, in that discussion, one thing that did come out, and one thing I want to know, and maybe we can add this if everybody agrees, is that if there's a possibility for a percentage of the tax to be earmarked for substance abuse prevention and intervention services so that we address that issue, you know, so if there's a possibility to do that, I don't know if there's a possibility to do that, but I think if there's a way for us to today give that direction to staff, that'd be great. And I just want to open it up to Councilwoman Negrete or Brock, if they have anything else to add.
I was just going to add that we also wanted to focus on local business operators as well, and looking at the small business operator and not the large conglomerate business operator that, I know that was in here at some point. So just to make sure that we focus on that as well.
Councilmember Brock?
And I'll echo both Lotta and Oscar, but emphasize that there is a strong community component to this in terms of finding ways to help the community. So it's not only tax revenue, not only service to the community, but it is also ways that we help people in need of the community by, as Oscar said, alcohol prevention, other types of services. There can be some of that extra revenue if we decide later on to go forward, could go to services of the police department and homeless services as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Davis?
So a couple of times you've mentioned revenue. And actually, under the state law, there is a state tax, but we don't get any of that. That goes to the state. So if we want to get local tax revenue, one of the things we need to do, and that's not in the 13 items, so you might consider adding it, is to ask staff to come back with an examination of what other localities have done in terms of taxing measures so that we might impose a local tax, because that's the only way we will get any direct tax revenue from the sale of cannabis.
Can we add that?
Yeah, so I think that's, we just need to make that clear so that staff knows to come back and look at it. And I certainly agree with targeting the revenues from such a tax to addiction prevention and treatment, as well as public safety, probably makes sense. Because it would, again, under Prop 220, we'd have to put the tax on the ballot. You can't just adopt the tax from the dais. So you would have to actually put the potential tax measure before the voters.
That's a great suggestion, Councilwoman Davis.
Okay, and I think we have speakers on this. Mr. Foster?
Hello. Hi, Jonathan Foster. I don't approve of the last line, final, where allow cannabis-themed special events specified locations in the city. I don't approve of that whatsoever. And I play on, I smoked pot since I was 13, on and off. I went 10 years, I didn't smoke pot, started smoking again. On Third Street Promenade, I play out there. I see everybody as little kids, and I smelled more pot out there than I've ever smelled. I played out there for 22 years. In the last four years, I smelled more pot on Third Street. It is disgusting. Even if I smoked pot, I don't want to smell your pot. Please get your pot out of here. It's absolutely effing disgusting to smell other people's pot. The state wasn't supposed to make money off of this. This was supposed to be legal for us pot smokers, and the state and the governments weren't supposed to make a penny on this. It's absolutely disgusting to see that. You want to make tax revenue on this. The other part, I wanted to say this, too. Mawha, smokable flowers, Chinese. So it was mawha. And it got turned into mawha wana, which is the Spanish Mexican part. They put an "a" on it because it's female. That's where that word comes from. It's actually mawha. But I don't, you know, I thought this was supposed to be about like a personal take-home kind of thing, where you could do it at home and keep it away from the kids. I mean, the cigarette smoking, too. I moved to California because of a guy who's Jewish, Henry Waxman, I believe, Senator Waxman. He passed the bill for no smoking, cigarette smoking. And I want to sue every cigarette smoker that blows that crap in my face. I want to sue them. But I don't have enough money necessarily to do all that. But it's the same as the cannabis, right? So there's so much about this. It's convoluted, even though I support the idea of the pot and all that kind of stuff. I just, there's no.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Councilmember Negrete?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Foster, that I agree with your comment on the overwhelming smell in the public. I completely understand. I have kids, and we often comment on that. This is a study session, so I think it's, Negrete, Brock, I mean, I'm sorry, calling myself De La Torre, that this is a study session, and so we're looking at what's best. And I think it's going to evolve. I think ultimately what we were looking at is the idea that we're not inviting this opportunity and inventing it. This is happening anyways, and putting this business in the light of day, so to speak, is a theory that people have, other cities, other counties have jumped on a long time ago. Yes, there is a profit aspect of it. And as Councilmember Davis pointed out, unless we put something on the ballot, the city won't really see any of that. It's at the state level. But I think it's important to note that, in my opinion, it was about having these places actually would inspire people if it's not just for medicinal, that you can actually smoke inside. The same way, if you were to go to a bar and you have a drink, you can't walk with your open beverage outside. You have, well, you can't walk, you're not supposed to. So if people walk around, they're not supposed to. So I just wanted to point out that that's the spirit that this is going in. And as we look at the study session, you know, we'll continue to tweak it to make sure that it's in the right spirit. I don't think I, any of us up here would like it to become that there's going to be a cannabis festival. And I can see how that last line might suggest that. Rather, we're looking at the business aspect of it instead, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember De La Torre?
Yeah, just to clarify on the events so that we all understand, there was a proposal for an event at the Barker Hangar, like at the airport, 21 and over, not like a smoke fest, but more like an exhibition of products. You know, like, people wanted to exhibit sort of like, you know, like an expo-type thing. And that was it. But in any case, as you stated, Councilwoman Negrete, this is a study session for us to talk about all the ins and outs. What do we want in the city? What's appropriate for Santa Monica? We don't want it to turn into, I agree with what Mr. Foster said. I also, you know, I want to keep a family-friendly environment on the Santa Monica Promenade, for example. So those are things that we'll be able to discuss. Thank you.
Councilmember Brock?
I'd like to move this forward for a study session, please, with the amendment.
Yeah, no amendment needed, I think.
Oh, okay. All righty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Negrete? And I just want to make sure the city manager got all that.
I did. And just to clarify, just to make sure I'm on the same page. So you want us, as part of this study session, we'll explore delivery. We will look at local taxes, as well as, I think, part of that survey, we'll look at where those local taxes go to, because it was a discussion about allocating resources to certain specific items like drug prevention or substance abuse. We'll want to look at the selection criteria and how to prioritize a local operator. I heard that come up as well. The one item I did want to clarify was, did you also want us to look to explore about areas where we would, facilities that would allow consumption indoors? Or just focus on?
So can you just recommend, because this is a study session, that you all bring back whatever is permissible?
Sure.
And then how it might be applied in Santa Monica? And then people can remove things that don't fit for our community and sort of talk it through. But I think it would be good to just, you know, state law's pretty clear on all the options and just whatever. Yeah, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I agree. I just want to say, I do think it is worth looking at, because this happens to be the new hot trend, I just came back from New York, cannabis lounges, which actually addresses the issue of some of people smoking in public because they're required to have filtration systems and things like that. So people, you know, have a place where they can smoke cannabis if they want to do so, but it doesn't impinge necessarily as much on the public. So I think cannabis lounges should be part of that.
Are we good? Okay, motion by Brock, second by De La Torre. Can the, maybe?
Negrete.
Oh, sorry, Negrete. If the clerk could call the roll.
Negrete.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Can everyone vote, please?
Just so you know, Denise, I can't actually hit mine.
Oh.
That's why I've not been doing it.
Because of the mic?
No, it says I'm inactive because Mayor Hemmerich is voting from home.
Oh, which is absolutely.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Item 13C.
Next, we have 13C, and it's request of Mayor Hemmerich and Councilmembers Brock and Davis that city council suspend the meetings of the Housing Commission until city council considers its annual appointments in June 2022. Once the Housing Commission resumes meeting, following the appointments, it shall immediately hold elections for a chair and a vice chair. And you have one, two, three, four? It looks like seven speakers, but I know that there's a donation amongst these.
Councilmember Davis, would you like to present on this?
Sure. And let me start out, because I've gotten some very strange emails over the past few days. This is not an attempt to disband the Housing Commission. This is not an attempt to take it over in any way, shape, or form. But what we do have is a problem where there seems to be a fairly serious dispute about the leadership of the commission that has interfered with the commission's ability to do its job. There is a person who believes he was elected chair. There are also people on the commission who believe he resigned for that chairperson position. At the most recent Housing Commission, the vice chair ran the meeting, but then turned the meeting over to someone who was literally sworn into the commission five minutes earlier. And while she did a perfectly all-right job of running the meeting, there just seems to be a lot of confusion around the leadership of the commission. And having watched the meeting, it's clear that it is interfering in some ways with both its effectiveness and its efficiency. Although I haven't been party to this, it's my understanding that when there have been attempts by staff to try and sort of bring the relevant parties into the room, that hasn't happened. They have refused to join on calls or whatever. And so there doesn't seem to be any other way to resolve this rather than by waiting until we actually finish appointments at the end of the year, which would be in June, and then having the Housing Commission hold elections for new leadership. And then presumably, there won't be any dispute about who the chair and the vice chair are and who should be running the meetings. And so, again, this is not an attempt to try and undermine the commission. It's really just an attempt to try and make it more. it's really just an attempt to try and make it more efficient and effective. Since I have the mic, I do want to say one thing, I, over the last few days, been accused of trying to violate people's First Amendment rights. I'm certainly personally not trying to do that, nor do I think anyone on this diocese. I will say, it's, it's a little sad, in all honesty, to see some of the horrible, horrible personal attacks that have been made upon members of the Commission in the context of this dispute. But people have a First Amendment right to say those horrible things, and they can continue to do so. But I think it just underscores the need for this Commission to have leadership at the top, undisputed leadership, and so rather than try and make it sort of, for lack of a better term, fluster, you know, flummox around, until there's well-identified, agreed-upon leadership at the top of the Commission, the idea is to wait until we do the appointments in June, have them choose a Chair and a Vice Chair, and then let them go forward and do their work.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Ms. Warren, Anderson Warren, I just want to confirm, I'll start by calling the first three names, but it appears that the first person is listed twice, did they have a donation?
She has a timed donation, so it's Olga Zaroska.
With how many minutes?
She has two minutes, and then she has two minutes being donated from Denise Burton.
So a total of four minutes?
Yes, four minutes.
From Ms. Burton? Okay, so I will first call forward Ms. Zaroska.
And then Teresa Marasco.
Ms. Marosco?
Same thing, she has two minutes from Michael Loitz.
Okay.
And so she has four minutes.
Okay, and Mr. Alley, you'll be the third person. Once we get to Ms. Marosco, I will then call the additional folks up. Ms. Zarosco, you can begin.
If you take action on this item tonight, it will be in violation of the Brown Act. There have been private discussions regarding this item among more than three Councilmembers, which constitutes an unlawful serial meeting. The public will seek to invalidate any action you take on this item. One of the sponsors of this item, Mayor Hemmerich, would have had to recuse herself from this item due to a well-documented and self-admitted bias concerning the Housing Commission. As for suspending the meetings, the mayor's husband, Michael Soloff, argued for the Commission's vital importance and the need to meet monthly only a year ago. You granted his request. Now you want to suspend the Commission? There is no precedent for this. This item is unlawful and unethical. It attempts to target specific Commissioners in an attempt to silence them. This is a violation of the First and Fourteenth Amendment, and an example of government overreach. You may not proceed with this item. There will be legal consequences, and again, there is no precedent. And Councilmember Davis, you're a liar.
Ms. Zarosco, if you have a minute? Can you, you mentioned a Brown Act violation, I'm just, can you please clarify, while you're here, who violated the Brown Act?
Maybe the people come forward, if not, we'll ask the DA.
Okay. Okay. You have, okay. I just want to make sure you didn't need your full amount of time. Okay. I guess that's a no, Ms. Marosco.
Good evening, Mayor Hemmerich and Councilmembers. I am the Vice Chair of the Housing Commission, but speaking only on my own behalf, I oppose Agenda Item Thirteen C, because it is a complete about-face from City Hall's narrative regarding the Housing Commission on April twenty-eighth, 2021, which stated at its meeting that last night, the City Council approved changes to Santa Monica's boards, commissions, and task forces to increase effectiveness, attract diverse representation from the Santa Monica community in line boards and commission activities with departmental work plans. Council's adopted changes come after a community working group sent the past year reviewing the bylaws and purview of Santa Monica's advisory bodies and formulating recommendations, which Council considered as it approved changes. Council will weigh in on streamlining some advisory bod- bodies to increase effectiveness at a later meeting. At City Council meeting on April twenty-seventh, 2021, pro tempore Mayor Kristen McCowen's statement regarding Item Eight-B, comprehensive review of boards, commissions, and task, task forces was, quote, "Santa Monica is fortunate to have deeply knowledgeable and dedicated residents who participate in boards and commissions, contributing to a caring and thriving community for all people," said Mayor Pro Tim Kristen McCowen. "It's important to regularly evaluate where we are and where we want to go, and that's what this action signals. We want more participation, more diverse participants. We encourage more voices to consider advisory bodies as a meaningful way to get involved." And during that same meeting, then Housing Commissioner Chair, Michael Soloff spoke as the Chair on behalf of the entire Commission to address Item Eight-B of that meeting regarding comprehensive review of boards, commissions, and task forces, and stated, quote, "I'm addressing the issue of how often we're going to be allowed to meet moving forward from this point. At our last meeting, we voted seven to nothing to urge the Council to permit us to resume our normal operations. Affordable housing is one of the key issues in the city right now. We're faced with the idea of coming up with six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight additional housing units. We have to get homeless folks into temporary and permanent housing, and we have to keep our residents housed who are under severe rent burden shortage. And we can't do that work for you unless we're allowed to meet. We strongly urge that you authorize us to resume our normal operations. We challenge you to show that you're seriously committed to affordable housing in the city. Would this be happening right now if we still had Chair Soloff? Today, when more recently homeless, low-income Housing Commission members have, have taken charge of the Commission, this motion appears to be an attack to prevent control from the bottom up, so to speak. There should not be an action preventing free speech through control of the Commission and its agenda, which is actually the real issue. However, the language in this item expressly states that the intention is to control the Housing Commission's leadership. In order to maintain control of the agenda, by emphasizing that, quote, "Once the Housing Commission resumes meeting following the appointments, it shall immediately hold elections for Chair and Vice Chair." Is that necessary to, to state that? To be clear, the real issue is, is larger than control over the agenda. A few Councilmembers and staff members told me that the discussions have led to certain people stating that the Housing Commission is dysfunctional, does not have work to do.
Thank you, Ms. Marosco. I'd like to call it Mr. Alley, and Mr. Morris, and Mr. Ray Morgan. Mr. Alley, you have two minutes.
My friend Michelle Gray is ill, she wanted to speak tonight, so she asked me to-
I just want to turn on your mic. Okay, you can repeat that before your time starts, if you'd like.
My friend Michelle Gray was not able to attend tonight, and she's asked if she could speak, so hold this up.
Thank you, John, this is Michelle Gray, please start my tongue now. Good evening, Councilmembers. In my short time on the Housing Commission, I've tried to address some longstanding housing issues. In return, a few senior city staff and Councilmembers have pressured, patronized, ignored, and lied to me and others, finally threatening me and, and others with being recalled, suspending Commission meetings, or dismantling the Commission entirely. You are about to vote on enacting one of those threats. Despite whatever lies have preceded these comments and whatever lies follow, this is not about conflict among Commissioners. It is not about budget cuts or staffing shortages, or the drama created by an unprofessional and inconsistent former Chair. This is about control. Suspending these meetings will prevent HCD and HUD speakers from addressing city fair housing violations, the Commission from advising the Council on the budget in May, and residents from influencing the use of vast forthcoming federal funds. Item Thirteen C is just the latest and most public unethical and unlawful action by certain senior city staff and Councilmembers trying to control the Housing Commission agenda and dispense with any conflict by silencing honest Commissioners. This is not how good city governance works. We need unbiased and ethical senior city staff and officials who serve Santa Monicaans' collective interests, not their own. The only appropriate response to this unscrupulous attack on public participation is to vote no on Item Thirteen C, then work to address the real problems we face. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alley, well, Ms. Gray via Mr. Alley. Mr. Morris?
Good evening, Councilmembers. I can't underline the comments of these ladies tonight, it's truth and facts, so I'll go from there. The Santa Monica Housing Commission was created by ordinance in nineteen seventy-six, and has been successfully serving the community almost half a century, forty-six years to be exact. And the City Council considered the Commission's workload so important and extensive that one year ago, it granted the Commission, the then-Commission Chair, Mr. Soloff, that the Council voted and granted the Commission to resume monthly meetings. Six months later, Mr. Soloff became ineligible to continue serving, because he is married to Mayor Hemmerich. Fast forward another six months, until now, when all of a sudden, this Council wants to reverse itself by suspending the Commission meetings, as if the Housing Commission's issues in the city are no longer important. You cannot sway the general public to believe that there's not an issue here with the mayor supporting this Agenda Item tonight. And the comments that you made, Ms. Davis, somewhat, I disagree. I disagree totally, actually. There's not a schism between the leaders so much. One meeting together, and that will all be solved by vote. So I'm asking you all to vote that the meetings continue, they're necessary for this city, and we support that, the people support that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Ray Morgan, are you here? Okay. With that, are there any other speakers on this Agenda Item? Okay. Councilmember Brock?
I, I appreciate the speakers who have spoken tonight, including two of the Housing Commissioners. I also do want to note that I participated in trying to calm the waters. I spent, along with the City Manager, an hour and a half with the current or former Chair, depending on how, how the terminology in the day goes that day. I spent several hours talking to a portion of the Housing Commissioners as well. It appeared to me, at the time, as well as other Councilmembers, that the controversy that had gone on over the past sixty to ninety days was going to continue. And they were going to be unable to have a civil meeting that would really address the issues that were prevalent in the city, that it appeared instead that we were going to be, that that Commission was going to be subject to character assassination on all sides. I want our Commissions, our appointed Members, that we, on the diocese, appointed, or didn't, depending on how you voted, I want them to represent the people of the city well. In many cases, some of us voted for new Commissioners, because we thought there'd be a new attitude, a new way of doing business for the Housing Commission. But, living in disharmony, and attacking and assailing each other, doesn't help the business of the people of the city, and it certainly doesn't help the psyche of the various Commissioners. So, that was my reasoning for co-sponsoring. Now, I've just heard from two Commissioners who believe that they can solve this in their next meeting, and that they can take care of this issue. I hope they can, and I hope they can without ranker, and without distress caused to any of the Commissioners of that Commission. And I hope that they will pledge to work together if we allow them to continue meeting right now. It is not a plot to silence the Commission. It was simply an effort to try and restore reason and calm to a Commission that seemed to have lost its way. Thank you.
Before, Ms. Anderson Warren, the appointments in June, what is the date currently scheduled for those appointments? And how many appointments relate to the Housing Commission specifically?
So it would be the second meeting in June, and I'm not sure of the number. Yeah, I know there's at least two.
Okay, at least two. And how many meetings does the Housing Commission currently have scheduled before June? What is that, twenty-fourth, or?
So there would be one meeting in May and one in June.
And the June one would fall before we meet on the twenty-first?
I think they meet the third week of the month.
Okay, so that would probably take place after our appointments, but it would still consist of the same membership until July one?
I think it would happen the week before, because you guys meet the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Oh yeah, sorry, we meet the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth. Okay, so we're talking about two meetings?
Yes.
Two meetings. Okay, before, Councilmember Davis.
So, I just want to say a couple of things in response to the public testimony. First of all, I, I have not spoken to anybody and told them that this is an attempt to disband the Commission or anything like this. My concern is this, that yes, there are two more meetings, and I appreciate the promises from the Commissioners who spoke this evening. They are not the only people involved in this controversy is the problem. And my concern is that they may think that it can get resolved, I think they may already think it has been resolved. The problem is that staff is, there are other Commissioners who don't think it's been resolved. And we haven't heard from those Commissioners tonight, and for whatever reason, I don't know. But, I, I think my concern is, if, if they want to continue to meet, there has to be, it's not just a question of will they take a vote, but there has to be some meeting of the minds among the current Commissioners that every Commissioner can live with that vote. I mean, the problem we have now is, we have one Commissioner who believes he is the Chair, we have other Commissioners who believe he is not the Chair. And if they just simply outvote him again, and he thinks he's still the Chair, we're, we're going to be back to having staff spend a lot of time trying to do negotiations to make this Commission run more smoothly. So, I mean, I, I get the sense from Councilmember Brock's statement that he no longer supports this idea. But if that is the case, I do think what we need to effectively tell the Commission is that they can no longer rely on staff to sort of negotiate these treacherous waters. That if they take a vote and they duly elect a Chair and a Vice Chair, and everyone on the Commission agrees with that, that staff cannot act as the go-between or the mediator, there can't be complaints from anyone about that, and my concern is, I don't think anyone can guarantee that, because that's how we ended up in this position initially. And so that, this is my concern, you know. So, if, if they want to continue to meet, I mean, I, I have, I did not speak with any Housing Commissioners about this, you know, who mentioned tonight what they were told, that was not me, this is never an intent to disband the Commission. If they want to continue to meet, that's fine, but then they have to meet, and everyone has to agree on who the leadership of the, and when I say everyone, I mean everyone, has to agree who the leadership of the Commission is, and who's going to be doing the assignments, work plans, and things like that. And to the extent there's any dissension in the Commission, we're going to be right back here, which was the whole idea about waiting till, because we know there are at least two openings. I don't know who's going to be appointed to those, people may be reappointed, maybe not, but at least then, because it'll be effectively a reconstitution of the Commission, at that point, anybody who currently claims to be the Chair, their term as Chair will effectively end, and there would be election of new Chair and Vice Chair, and at that point, presumably, everyone, whether they agreed with this election or not, would have to live with it. So if they want to continue to meet, that's fine, but they, I mean, I will be honest with you, I've seen some of the things that have been said about staff. I mean, staff has been abused in all of this. And yes, you have a First Amendment right to attack council members. Bring it on, as somebody said in an email to me, bring it on. We, we knew this job was dangerous when we took it. But staff members should be afforded respect. They are only there to try and help the commissioners and yet terrible things been said about them. The commissioners are saying terrible things about each other, which can't be conducive to the commission working together. So until everyone can sort of take a deep breath, um, you know, if they want to continue to meet, that's fine with me, but they can't expect, they, they can't be attacking staff. You can't be accusing staff of the things that staff has been accused of. You can't be attacking each other because how are you supposed to work as a group when you're calling other people names that I think are so horrible, I'm not going to repeat from up here. Um, and so I, you have a First Amendment right to say those, but you can't expect the council to function if you do say those. So, I mean, the commission to function if you do. So I just think, you know, I'm fine. You guys want to meet, that's fine. But I think then the city administration has to step out of it and, um, if there are disputes and it gets in the way of the work being done, there's nothing we can do at this point. You guys have to work it out amongst yourselves.
Um, Councilmember De La Torre.
No, I appreciate the, the dialogue and I appreciate your, your comments, uh, Councilwoman Davis. You know, I think, um, part of what, what's missing is, you know, uh, having, um, conflict is good, I think, you know. Adults are going to disagree on certain things and there'll be some conflict. But having, um, uh, more of a, uh, a facilitated process, you know, where people, like mediation, for lack of a better term, so that, um, people can really get a bit, a deeper understanding. I think, uh, there's a lot of new people, you know, on this commission and, and it's good for people to hear sort of why they're there, you know, on a human level, you know, um, to find common ground. And so I, I would recommend that the, um, that we support the, the commission meetings continuing, uh, but, but to offer, um, you know, for, for the commission, any type of facilitation that they, that they can identify that would probably be beneficial to them and, and, um, getting to sort of, uh, find purpose, you know, in their work and, and, um, develop a, a set of agreements, you know, uh, so that, so that they can, they can, uh, move their, their, their work forward. I mean, um, I, I've seen, I've seen organizations experience this. I've, I've been in many situations throughout my life where there was very contentious meetings and through mediation, through dialogue, you know, through, uh, trained facilitation, um, people can understand, they can develop a better understanding of, of why they're involved and, and what their goals are and find common ground. And, and I hope that that is what we can accomplish in these next couple of meetings before, uh, the elections happen, uh, for the, um, leadership in, in June.
So a couple of things, um, I, so I think that, um, I think Councilmember De La Torre is definitely, um, on to something. I, I would argue that since we do have some new appointments coming up for that commission, it would probably make the most sense to hold off on putting staff resources, I mean, city resources into a, a facilitated mediation type thing, uh, or retreat, it sounds like, for the housing commission until we have a full commission, right? Um, I don't know that it makes sense to invest that right now in people who may or may not be there in a month and a half. Um, but I, I hear what you're saying. I think on the, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about creating a hostile work environment for our staff, knowingly putting them into a hostile environment. Um, I don't know, um, Ms. Anderson Warren or Ms. Cola or Mr. White, if there's a way that the commission could meet similar to like during COVID without staff support? Um, and if any report out not be in the name of a chair or vice chair that, or that it not officially be on behalf of the commission as a whole, but on behalf of, you know, certain commissioners, is there a way that they can sort of proceed with their work for those that want to? And, um, that we're kind of in like a hold pattern on the, the resources that we provide? Because again, I, I, it does sound a little worrisome that we're putting staff in, in this position.
So, um, the issue we're facing is that, um, council allocated resources in February so that the commission could have, um, a permanent staff liaison. Uh, that resource will be in place in the summertime. Should, by the time we turn the fiscal year, that resource will be in place. So right now, we really don't have dedicated staffing. The challenge that we're facing is we're having a hard time mediating disputes with the commission, um, so that they can meet and we know who to defer to, to do things like develop agendas on their behalf. Um, we just have a part-time person facilitating that. So I, I think we just need some direction from you about what form this body should take. Um, because right now we don't really have, we don't have the resources for them, so that's our current state of affairs. Um, as we sort of get this person on board.
And they can't meet in a way similar to other commissions that met during COVID without staff support. I mean, we know we don't have the funds for that until July one anyway. We know we'll have clear leadership after that point anyway. So in interim, what is the harm in them meeting?
That is their current disposition.
Right.
And the challenge specifically is there's, um, individual who, uh, has resigned, not resigned as chair, long story. So there's difficulty in understanding who is supposed to set the agenda at this point in time. So we don't know how to moderate the conflict about who's going to set up the meetings in that format you're describing.
And it has to be that formal, I guess. Is that?
Brown Act commission, so there has to be a notice sent out, that there has to be an opportunity for public comment. You can't just say, hey, you guys get together amongst yourselves and have a meeting in someone's front room. So that's the problem, is there has to be some formality that meets the requirements of the Brown Act, I think.
Councilmember Negrete.
If there's an active vice chair, can that person set the agenda and make, since we're confused about who the chair is?
So that's kind of the loop we're stuck in. So yes, there is absolutely an active vice chair. The person who is chair, um, has a different perspective of events. And so we're, we don't believe it's our role to moderate or decide that outcome. And so we're stuck at the staff level of how, so we tried, I mean, just like the full story, Councilmember Brock and I tried to bring the chair and vice chair together to have a conversation, to try to work this out, to try to understand who would run the meetings. Um, the chair in dispute, uh, participated, the vice chair didn't, so we couldn't. We thought we had an outcome in that meeting, it didn't work out. Um, so, uh, so yes, there is a vice chair, there's disagreement amongst the parties about that situation. So we're, we at staff are, we don't know what to do.
I guess what I'm saying, if the disagreement or the confusion is around the chair, but, but there isn't any confusion around who the vice chair is and that person's role. So is it, I mean, I know now we're stepping into the details, but if, then if that's the confusion and there's an active vice chair that's not, why can't we, can staff say, well, until that gets resolved, this is the person who's setting the agenda?
I'll defer, I wanted to defer to the attorney on this because if, maybe that's the direction we need in terms of who to work with.
Yeah, the problem was there, it was the chair, the, the chair who sent the fax, uh, prior to the March seventeenth meeting, saying he was resigning, but there was some ambiguity because it appeared his intent, at least from his perspective, was he was resigning as chair for that meeting only. And then, uh, the, some of the other commissioners interpreted that to mean he was resigning permanently and therefore he would not have a role in the agenda. But he was quite adamant and therefore we got into the, you know, we were caught in the middle. And we attempted to resolve the situation by suggesting that the chair and the co-chair worked together to put together an agenda and include in the agenda, uh, an item that would allow all of the commissioners to vote to either confirm that the chair resigned or not. And then what happened was at the April meeting, there was not a quorum, so there was no meeting. Uh, and that was part of the problem. So it's, unfortunately, the situation is still the same in that unless the commissioners agree to, at least for this upcoming meeting, avoid the dispute of who's the chair or who's not the chair, but to at least have the two work together to set the agenda. And they could still put an item on there just saying, uh, to either decide whether the chair is still the chair or not the chair, or they could just agree to just, until the, for the next two meetings, until the appointments are made, to work just cooperatively to put together the agenda and forgetting about who's the chair or who's not the chair, but just to, you know, set the agenda and allow some flexibility so that anybody who wants to get an item on the agenda can get the item on the agenda and they can just vote. So it really is just a matter of cooperation and then I think we would have, we would be fine. Uh, but the problem was we couldn't get to that point because, uh, the chair and the co-chair weren't talking to each other and we were caught in the middle because we were asked to take sides.
Well, I think I've reached my moment of frustration. The chair of the commission resigned in writing from being chair. In his letter, he did not resign for that day or two hours or three hours. He didn't recuse, he didn't say, I'm staying home this week, someone else needs to take care of it. It is clear from the facts in large black letters that he resigned as chair of the commission. Two days later, the next, uh, the vice chair ran the meeting, a couple of days later, ran the meeting and thanked the chair of the commission for his service to the commission. That part is clear. Then the chair sent another fax saying, in effect, just kidding, I have not resigned. I just re- resigned for that meeting, something I have never heard of before. Then send another fax. No, these are faxes. He is, he is, uh, he is a wonderful person who's been on that commission for many, many years. He is partially disabled. He sent a fax. Now, later, because of all the discussion, the city manager and I met via telephone with the chair of that commission who had resigned. He resigned three more times during that hour and a half, three more times. The city manager sent out a memo saying the chair of the commission has resigned, we've resolved it. The following day, the former, now I would call him the former chair of the commission, sent another letter saying, we bullied him, he didn't really resign, doesn't want to resign, he wants to be chair. At some point, I would say that our city staff, not to throw you guys under the bus, I apologize, but should have just said, look, you resigned, someone else is the chair, appoint a new vice chair at your next meeting. We are going beyond politically correct at this point to, to, we spent a half an hour or more hashing, huh? Yeah, hashing something out that really should have been done day one. If I wrote on a piece of paper right now, I resign from the city council, I'm not doing that. Sorry, guys, don't start clapping yet. But if I said right then, I resign from the city council right now and turn in this letter to the, to the mayor pro tem, everyone's going to, policemen are going to take me out of the room, they're going to lock the doors and make sure I can't come back in. And tomorrow morning, there you go. And, and tomorrow morning, if I turn around and say, just kidding, I was just resigning for the rest of the meeting, I can guarantee the city council or any board I've been, ever been on or the commissions I served on in this city for almost eighteen years would not let me renege on that and come back. We are playing a silly game at this point. I appreciate the chair's service to the city. I appreciate, I, I've sat in on neighborhood meetings with him back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. He is a valuable member of that commission. He's been a valuable, I mean, extremely valuable, knowledgeable member of our community. But the fact is, he resigned as chair of the commission. There is a vice chair. As far as I'm concerned, if Ms. Marosco wants to conduct the next meeting and they want to hold it a election, which I don't know if they need to do, for two months, then so be it. But honestly, I am so tired of, we have tried everything to get this commission to work together. I, I hope Ms. Davis's comments, Mr. De La Torre's comments and my comments will ask, will serve notice to that commission that we don't want to hear from them again, except for the good works they're doing on behalf of the residents in the city. That's it, period. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege here because we're back in person for a long time. There is no clapping in this chamber. If you want to show your agreement, you can do this, but we're respectful of everyone's opinions, whether you agree with them or not. So you can do the jazz hands things, but there's no clapping. We ask that you not laugh, shout out or react to anybody because we want everyone to feel comfortable when they're making their statements.
Okay, so where, do we have a motion? Okay. All right, so.
I, 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 I get the sense that we just shouldn't make a motion and we'll just move on. I think that's the thing to do. But I hope that everyone involved in this controversy has heard this, that we are hopeful that you can treat each other with respect, you can treat staff with respect and you can certainly, we intend to treat the work of the commission with respect.
Okay, Councilmember Brock. I mean, De La Torre.
Uh, I, I just want to, I, I want to offer my, myself and my experience in mediation services to commission members if, if they, if they, uh, feel that it would be useful. If any commi, if the commissioners feel, you know what, let's, let's, uh, let's try that out. I'm willing to come in and, and, uh, and be, uh, part of the process, you know, to try to find some reconciliation, set some ground rules, some agreements, uh, figure out what the agenda is and how, how this commission, uh, can move forward. I would offer that. So, uh, please let me know if, if, if that could be useful to you and I, I would love to dedicate some time and commit some time, uh, as my service, you know, to, to you all and to, to show that this council is committed to your work moving forward and, and being positive. And, uh, and I want to, I want to help you, uh, make that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Torre. And we do hope that the commission can come together because they do have important work to do and, um, uh, particularly ahead of our, of the budget session. So thank you so much. Item thirteen D, please.
Item thirteen D is request of Councilmember Brock that the city manager return with the study session on an expedient basis with a report on the status of existing safety and security on the Third Street Promenade, parking garages and surrounding areas in downtown Santa Monica, including potential options to enhance the safety and security of residents, workforce and visitors. And it looks like we have three requests to speak on this.
Okay, so Councilmember Brock, if you'd like to introduce your item. And I'd just like to really quickly, um, thank Councilmember Negrete's family for joining us today.
Oh, I didn't even see that. Cool.
Councilmember Brock.
Was that birthday girl?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we should have all said happy birthday to her. Uh, so I have heard from, uh, residents, business owners, property owners, merchants, and I have walked our downtown area, uh, more than usual over the last couple of months to see for myself where we're succeeding and possibly where we're failing. Um, I, I made a, uh, maybe an ill-timed email out to the public that I didn't think was going out to the world.
that I didn't think was going out to the world last week. But I believe that we need to make it a priority to look at public safety and restore the trust of residents so that they feel safe and comfortable enjoying our downtown. Because as I have said many times in the past, if our residents love our downtown, if our residents feel safe going to and from our downtown via bicycle, via car, via pedestrian path, which is what I do, or via, you know, e-cycles, et cetera, e-scooters, that I want them to feel that the city, even though it's a big city, even though there's always gonna be some problems in every city, that our police department, our public safety apparatus are doing their best to keep our downtown safe, that our custodial services and our contract services through their downtown Santa Monica Inc., or through our city, are doing their best to keep the promenade and all related areas safe, clean, hospitable, for our merchants to do business in, for our property owners to be proud of the area they own business, they own property in, and for our residents who live downtown to feel that they, their interests are also at heart. So all I'm asking is that the City Manager come back with looking at the status of existing safety and security of the promenade, parking garages, surrounding areas, and if there is room to improve, that he'll let us know. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Davis, would you like to go before the public comment?
Um, no, I'll wait till after the public.
Okay. Mr. Rubin, Ms. Barton, and Mr. Foster. Mr. Rubin, you have two minutes.
Well, thank you all very, very much again. Of course, there's always room for improvement. And the issue of homelessness and public safety has been a challenge for decades and decades. And Santa Monica's been doing a pretty good job under challenging circumstances, more than some of our neighboring cities even. That's why it is such an important thing to do it on a regional basis. It's not only the promenade, it's everywhere. You hear about things. But in some way, you can kind of expect during the COVID period that a lot of challenges like this are gonna be happening. So there's a need for us to make sure we're all working together, not attacking staff and not attacking each other. I don't know if we need another study session, which is already on the top of the minds of everybody, and there's gonna be a special City Council meeting tomorrow that I know I'll be at because it's very important on the issue of homelessness, what we can do and how we can help. So, I just want to say, I think we all know how important the issues are. I don't know, I can't say that another study session is gonna be needed or not, but let's wait till tomorrow and hear what some of the ideas are, and then proceed from there together. It is so important. It's distressing to hear what's happening in the Housing Commission. But it takes good people to make sure we're doing this. We didn't pass. We have to do it ourselves in some way. Let's do that. Henry.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna go home now and hug my wife. I deeply thank all of you guys for the work you've been trying to do. Sitting here here and close up like this is very, very difficult. In some ways, it's been very beautiful, seeing those proclamations that were given out today. I was almost in tears.
I think so.
Isn't that beautiful?
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Your time has expired. Thank you. Ms. Barton?
Good evening. For more specific details on my input on this item, please refer to my four thirty PM closed session input at the last City Council meeting on April twenty-six, twenty-two. I support ending the contract to block by block for those security ambassadors in favor of a contract with the Sheriff's Department. Due to the security ambassadors only being an intermediary to contact police, which makes police response take longer than having the Sheriff's Department on site. In addition, I do believe the Sheriff's Department will also save money. At the last downtown Santa Monica Inc. board meeting, the board was discussing hiring a homeless outreach coordinator and an overnight supervisor. But can't both those positions be covered by the Sheriff's Department, especially because the Sheriff's Department comes with its own homeless team, which has had more success with the homeless than any other service currently operating within the city now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Mr. Foster? You have two minutes.
Hi, again Jonathan Foster. I just want to say I need an hour to speak on this, but, and also I'm not high now, so. But I was gonna say, this is a, this is a bit of a quality life issue versus real crime, right? And so vandalism, theft, assault, that can be very broad from simple battery all the way to murder, right? They got peeing out there, sleeping in secure structures. They got public drunkenness going on constantly, and this place gives out alcohol licenses everywhere. They're drinking wide-open cups and bottles of beer on Third Street Promenade. I think it absolutely is disgusting. I don't know how anybody lets that happen here. I've had people, this girl was spitting for three hours in front of my drum set, just spit everywhere. I, I try, one suggestion is you write the laws on the concrete. That's where everybody looks. If you write the laws down there, especially by the, by the trash cans where people stand and smoke, if it said "no smoking here" and "no smoking around the thing," it might help a little. Try to give some suggestions instead of telling you everything you already know that people are peeing out there. You've heard that for ten years, right? Need to say it again. But let's look at some of the other issues. The Pentagon, the Pentagon budget and the audit of, of the Pentagon, how much money has gone out the window. We're giving all that money to the Ukraine. I'd, I'd give you guys a billion dollars like that. We need it. The police departments need a billion dollars, every single one of them. You got Elon Musk, the creep, he's got forty-four billion dollars to buy a business, didn't help one female in a wheelchair that's out there tonight again. Elon Musk, I would grind him into the ground. Every congressperson, I would put in jail. If you were dead, I would dig you up and put you in a jail cell. This is disgusting what they have let happen. Money changes most of this versus mental illness, and the money is going out the window.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Okay, Councilmember Davis.
So, I just want to pick up on something Councilmember Brock said, where he said, "All I'm asking is..." And I'm wondering if the City Manager can, because I think there's this sense that study sessions are, oh, well, everyone just shows up and talks. And I wonder if the City Manager can give us some idea about the kind of work that goes into doing a study session like this, you know, because it asks for it to come back on an expedited basis. So what work wouldn't you be able to do while you were doing this, preparing for this study session? I'm just trying to get a sense of what's really involved, because it's a fairly broad topic, and I can imagine would not only take up hours of Council time discussing it, but probably take a multitude of hours and staff in terms of preparing for it. So I'd just like to get a sense of that.
Well, the honest answer is the time it takes to put into is what you want to get out of it. So we would obviously want to deliver to you a thorough and thoughtful conversation of issues of community safety and public safety, particularly as it pertains to the promenade. So I haven't sat down with the Chief to get a specific estimate of how much time will go into it, but it will require, you know, a significant amount of time for him to prepare for the discussion. I will want to work with the Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor on agenda setting, because we have some fairly long meetings coming down the pike. So we'll need to think through with you when a study session can come back, or if this demands a separate meeting of the Council, and that's obviously your purview for that. But yes, I mean, we will want to invest a good amount of time to make sure that we can give you a thorough presentation on the issue, so you can deliberate and give us recommendations and advice.
And, and so realistically, I mean, again, I'm just sort of focusing on the word expedited in the thing. I mean, it sounds, we have budget sessions coming up. We're in the midst of some other hot and heavy issues that we need to resolve sooner rather than later. We have our housing element review, that sort of thing. So I'm just curious, I mean, realistically, are we gonna have to put something aside to do this? Or if we don't put something aside, realistically, I mean, what are we talking about? I just, I just don't want people, I mean, I, I support having this discussion.
Yes.
But I don't want people to think we're coming back in two weeks and having a study session about it, that it's gonna take some time to really pull it all together. And realistically, I'm not holding you to any particular date, but what you think might happen, I mean, when we might be discussing this.
And we, we did just add another study session earlier in the evening.
Right.
That we have to. So, Councilmember Brock, would you potentially be open to the language saying as soon as is practicable, especially considering tomorrow night, we're gonna be getting a comprehensive study session addressing the regional homelessness crisis?
Right. And I, and I believe there are different issues.
It's one hundred percent.
And, and, so I am, I was concerned, I, I don't know if it has to be a study session. I think the City Manager wrote part of the language for me. And it could be a series of reports by the Police Chief and Public Safety Personnel. I'm not sure, Councilmember Davis has a good point, that we are gonna be backed up the next two or three months. And I'm concerned deeply that safety and security is, is prominent on our promenade because summer is coming. And so we need to do the best we can. And yes, I'll have words about homelessness and what I hope that we can accomplish downtown, because even though they're intertwined, they are separate issues. So, City Manager, you can determine which way you come back.
Okay, because what...
Fair enough?
Yeah, and I think a few things. Tomorrow night, certainly, we'll talk about our work on addressing homelessness. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, asking us to come back on an expedited basis leading off this Council meeting, I hope I express the urgency by which we're acting today to address these issues and deploying our resources. So we can certainly, and I can talk to the Chief about weaving in some of the approaches that he's bringing forward with his department in the context of homelessness, perhaps in the context of our budget discussions as well. We can bring back some information and some discussion as well. So hopefully that'll provide a nice balance.
And, and what I'm really concerned about is that we make sure that we flag this as a priority in our city, and that it doesn't get left behind. So I'll move this forward, and I think you could put slash study, study session or staff, series of staff reports. And I'll leave that up to the City Manager.
The timing?
I think the timing of the reports can be the Police Chief or City Manager making a report even as part of their City Manager's reports coming up.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the motion.
Yeah, second.
Second by Del Torre. Are we all clear on what? Okay.
I just want to make a quick comment. Just, I, I want to thank Councilmember Brock for bringing this forward, and thank you, City Manager David White, you know, for your comments as well. I think many of us understand that, you know, public safety is a big priority. I think everybody on the Council agrees with that, and so we want to see some resolve. We, we've seen some really positive steps taken at Santa Monica Pier. It came from Council leadership and staff working together, and I think it's time for us to expand from, really extend the good work that's happened at the Santa Monica Pier into the other parts of the downtown and eventually to other parts of our city. So this Council has shown resolve, and I'm very proud that we're moving this item forward and we're working collaboratively to make it happen. So move, move the item.
Okay, moved, Ray Brock. Seconded by Del Torre. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Del Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem McCown?
Yes. Okay, next item.
Next is public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. And we have three requests to speak.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Foster, and Ms. Morosco, in that order, please. And Mr. Morris, you have two minutes. Oh, okay. We'll wait for you, sir.
Again, I'm deeply concerned that multiple residents called in and actually emailed within the gray spirit allowed by the city, requesting a reasonable accommodation to be allowed to speak to the Council by phone. The City Council, or City Clerk, rather, denied them this right. That's why John Alley had the phone up to the microphone. There are people in this city that are handicapped. They cannot come to this meeting. They definitely can't make it till this time of the night, which is early by your standards. To be allowed to speak to the Council by phone in an endemic, if you want to call it, is absolutely mandatory. We can't, there's people that just left. There's people with masks. You people have masks. Those people are afraid to come here. So we need to make some kind of arrangement so people can call in to this Council. It's necessary. I have some concerns about the promenade, not concerned with the agenda item. The restaurants, which are basically cocktail lounges in the Cantina, the two and the third block towards Wilshire, have taken up about two-thirds of the promenade area, plus expanded lengthwise over the leased spaces that are not being leased. The one, the furthest towards Wilshire has fifty tables outside. Fifty. Fifty tables outside, and they blare music like crazy. How are we gonna get leased people, like renovations which used to be there, on the promenade? What was the name of the store?
Restoration.
Restoration Hardware. How are we gonna get clients like that to come in and lease spaces where they have taken over the promenade? The Cantina has thirty outside. They don't have thirty tables inside. Thank you.
Hi. I'm seventy-two, and I've been here on the Council for a long time, so I'm retiring. Bye. By the way, abortion is heating up, isn't it? I'd still want to do the late-term abortion for all of you, because I don't really appreciate you. Another one on global warming. You know, if we had more gas, excuse me, more grass all over the place, it would be cooler. And what's happening is they're pouring more concrete everywhere, so it's getting hotter. Yep. And there's more sun radiation is increasing and will continue. That's right. And the earth is slowing, so we're gonna just heat up. So I was coming to talk about Promenade three point O and the Hanukkah menorah out there that's been going on, which is against the separation of church and state. It's been going on with the hybridness of Santa Monica and a business, which I would love to be able to file a lawsuit on, which I don't know enough lawyers and have enough money to get it going with. The separation of church and state prevents us from doing a Holy Land, but the federal government's doing it, right? So anything that happens here, you're gonna go along with it. I read in the Bible, it said David was a man of war. He wasn't able to build the temple. He had to give it to Solomon, who's got as much sexual sin as, as David. So this, this, I have been harassed out here, ongoingly, by this, this one kid. He died. Brandon was screaming at me that I was going to be kicked out of here. And what I've noticed really is, is that I'm a Christian, and they got some way to attack me. Either I suck on drums, or I'm no good, or, I mean, I've been, it's just been harassment constantly, right? So I, I support all the USA laws. You know, I support Jewish people here. Arrest anybody who's doing... who's doing vandalism or civil rights activity. I want them busted here, that's for sure. But helping over there.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Your time has expired. Ms. Morosco, is she still here? Okay. Are there any other speakers? Okay. We have one adjournment, and I will turn to Councilmember Davis for our adjournment tonight.
Yes, and this is a, I mean, all adjournments are sad. But unfortunately, tonight, I'm asking that we adjourn in the memory of Yow Katagiri, who was a perfect example of someone who unselfishly gave to this community. And so many people in this community, their lives are better because of just the tremendous amount of work that she did. She was RAND's longtime director of community relations and a local community activist. After graduating with her bachelor's degree in political science from UC Berkeley and a master's of public affairs from the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard, she joined RAND as a researcher in nineteen seventy-five. While at RAND, she played a pivotal role in replacing RAND's old headquarters building, establishment of RAND's first privately funded research center, the Institute for Civil Justice. And she also managed its extensive art collection of more than two hundred remarkable works. Although she had retired in two thousand six, Yow remained active at RAND as an adjunct staff member and a member of the graduate school faculty. She's credited with being the internal force behind RAND becoming more involved in this community, recognizing the value the community could provide to RAND and the value that RAND could provide to the community. And specifically, she was the driving force that, with the development agreement that established RAND's new headquarters, where they became very active in the early childhood education effort and sponsored as part of their obligations under the development agreement, annual conferences, bringing together experts from around the world on the topic of early childhood education. Yow was the chair of the Board of Directors at Providence St. John's Health Center. She was vice chair of the Santa Monica Chamber. She was co-chair of the Early Childhood District Advisory Committee for the Santa Monica-Malapu Unified School District. She was a past president of Connections for Children, a past co-chair of the Early Childhood Task Force. She also served on the boards of the Santa Monica College Associates and was the first vice chair of the Board on Wise and Healthy Aging. And that was not everything she did in this community. Those are just the highlights. She will be missed by so many in this community, and we all owe her an incredible debt of gratitude. She is survived by a sister who lives in Hawaii. And on behalf of this entire community, want to convey to her sister and her friends our deepest condolences.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Brock?
I just wanted to add, she was such a steady force, because, as some of you may know, sometimes I'm volatile. And very seldom, but once in a while. But I served with her on the Arts Commission for several years. I served with her on the Civic Working Group. I found her always to be a welcoming presence. It didn't matter if you agreed with her, disagreed with her. She was so willing to have those conversations and so willing to be calm and reasonable and thought so much of the good of our community. So I agree with Councilmember Davis. She will be missed by so many in our city. Thank you.
Yeah, true loss for our community, but her legacy lives on in all of the great work. So without, are there any other comments? Okay. This, our next meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, May eleventh, at six P M., where we will have a study session and update on local efforts addressing the regional homelessness crisis. We hope you'll join us then. And this meeting is adjourned.